That's awesome.
Okay, I'm gonna put your right side on. All right, well, that's not all because partnerships like this, they don't happen by accident. This worked out because Principal Kelly Lee drilled down to find a project that would benefit her students and left no stone unturned to find the right person for the job. She took a chance to do something new and in the process identified a valuable community resource and dedicated mentor. Straight from the words of the Leader in Me Framework, this is truly a win-win situation, and I would be remiss not to thank Ms. Lee for laying the groundwork on what I hope will be a strong partnership for years to come. Ms. Lee, would you come up for a coin, please? Listen, we've got all kinds of awesomeness happening in this community, just wait for this next story. Next up, school nurse Ms. Paige Hancock. This is her first year as a school nurse at Southern Elementary School. And as District Nurse Colleen Rice can attest, the students and staff at the school just love her. She's been a nurse for nine years, most recently working at Child First Urgent Care. She has past experience in pregnancy, childbirth, postpartum care, newborn nursery, pediatrics, plastic surgery, and performing her work in an emergency room setting. She has also done medical mission work in Mexico and Costa Rica. All of that is enough for a coin. I mean, my gosh, that's good stuff, yes. But while we can see her heart for service as a dedicated healthcare provider, and we're thankful that she's chosen to serve in our district, we've got her here for one more very special reason tonight. A few weeks ago, Paige was traveling on a busy stretch of I-75 when she passed a car accident that had just taken place. Car was stopped on the interstate and was hit from behind by another vehicle. Following her instinct and guided faith, her training took over. She pulled herself, I'm sorry, she herself pulled over and took command of the scene. She entered the car from the back window to find a female victim clinging to life among the wreckage. After getting her free, Nurse Hancock performed chest compressions relentlessly until the ambulance arrived. The woman was taken to the University of Kentucky. She was given a second chance that may not have been given without the quick response and lifesaving measures performed by our own school nurse, Paige Hancock. The woman is continuing her recovery and is able to communicate with her family, and we should not underestimate or downplay the heroism here, but we also want to recognize the impact such an experience must have on even the most highly skilled medical provider. In this time of Thanksgiving, it is with humble Thanksgiving that we applaud the courage of Southern Elementary School Nurse Paige Hancock, a living testament to the power we have to make a difference.
That's awesome.
Thanks ma'am.
Good stuff. All right, item four, agenda approval.
I still move.
Second, any discussion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? Billy's the public comment?
Oh, do I?
Oh, Billy's?
Okay.
Wait, you changed it a little bit.
Okay, Mike Davis is number one.
All right, Mike, you know the rules, we're putting you on timer, you got five minutes.
One point five speed.
I got a little feisty upstairs with Mike earlier and I was telling Corinne, my office was on fire and I was like, that was, I just, so I apologize, Mike, I was, by the way, it was, it was reading seventy-five or something like that when we, when we got out of there.
Yeah.
Oh, Lord.
Board members, Superintendent and the rest of the audience that are all here. As we move through the month of November, a season traditionally centered on gratitude and reflection, SCA would like to take the opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for the countless individuals who make our schools function each and every day. This is the time to pause and recognize that schools do not just run on curriculum alone, although I'm sure Ms. Holbrook and Stephanie and Ms. Reed will talk a lot about the celebrations we have for the test scores tonight. They run on people, dedicated, compassionate, and hardworking individuals who show up daily with one shared purpose, serving our students and our community. We are thankful for our teachers who pour their hearts and minds into shaping the young lives that we teach, often going far above and beyond their job description to ensure students feel safe, valued, and supported. We want to be, we're thankful for our classified staff, the unsung heroes who keep our buildings clean, our buses moving, our lunches served, our technology running, and our doors always safely open every single day. We are deeply thankful for our administrators who lead with integrity, make difficult decisions, and support both staff and students through challenges and successes. And we recognize the critical role of our counselors, our nurses, obviously, our paraprofessionals, maintenance teams, office staff, substitutes. Each and every one of them are essential to the daily heartbeat of our schools. We also extend our gratitude to this board, to our superintendent, for our continued commitment to the district and your partnership ensuring we can collectively serve our students in the best way possible. While our perspectives may not always align, our shared goal remains the same, making Scott County Schools the best place to live, learn, and work. November reminds us of the gratitude that is not just a sentiment, it is a responsibility, and it is our responsibility to recognize the incredible effort, resilience, and devotion of those who step into our buildings each and every day, and often quietly, but always faithfully. Just like Ms. Sunda, who does our food bank program, it's one of the most amazing things I've ever seen, and I'm very proud of the fact of what we do here in Scott County for so many of our local families. SCA is proud of the collaboration we continue to build with the district. We know that there is still work to be done, but we look forward to working together with transparency, respect, and shared purpose to strengthen our schools and support the people who make them exceptional. Tonight, we simply say thank you, thank you for the long hours, thank you for the unseen efforts, and thank you for the compassionate, compassion, the dedication, and then wavering belief in our students. We are grateful, not just in November, but always. And thank you all very much for what you all have done for us over the last several years. We look forward to doing more.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate the highlights, this is great.
This is nice.
All right, next we've got Drew Beckett.
Wendy, can you hear, or do you want me to move your, move this mic to the table? Okay, just checking.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. I'm sure a lot of your public comments aren't positive, but hey, this one's gonna be. So, I'm here to spend a few minutes speaking about a wonderful partnership between Scott County Schools and the Georgetown Scott County Parks and Recreation Department. The program is called Every Second Grader Will Learn to Be Safe in and Around the Water. The program consists of six forty-five minute swimming lessons, five water safety videos, and a worksheet relevant to the water safety video. Scott County Schools help provide student transportation to and from the pavilion, and then Parks and Recreation provides the staffing and the facility free of charge to all second grade students. Prior to the first visit to the pavilion, the student's parent completes a survey based upon the child's comfort level and skills that they know how to do in the water. Georgetown Scott County Parks and Rec partnered with Stampin' Ground Elementary for a pilot program back in May at the pavilion. On the first day, our aquatic manager conducts a pre-assessment to evaluate the readiness in the water using the American Red Cross Stroke Performance Criteria. During the lessons, volunteer instructors work with groups based upon their current level of performance. On the last day, the aquatics manager conducts the same assessment as on the first day to see the progress that we've made. In the pilot alone, thirty-six percent of those students increased their ability to swim. So, after meeting with your staff, we decided to expand the program beyond one pilot to offer it to every elementary school that wanted to take part. So far this year, Eastern Elementary School attended the program October sixth through the tenth with eighty-two students participating. And the students had sixty percent growth in their swimming ability and forty percent showed no change because they had that many kids that could already swim, which is great news. Anne Mason Elementary was next, they were there October twentieth through the thirty-first with eighty-four students participating. I'd like to say we've pretty much maxed out our pool capacity at eighty-four, so please don't get any bigger second grade classes in your, in your schools. But they had a fifty-nine percent student increase in their competency in and around the water. And again, forty-one percent basically had no change because they came to us knowing how to swim. The last thing I want to say, the remainder of the schools that are coming in this spring are Stampin' Ground in February. Northern Elementary is coming between March and April. And then Lemons Mill is coming April thirteenth through the twenty-seventh. The schools that chose not to participate were Southern, Garth, Western, and Creekside, but hopefully we can get them all onboard next year. So, I think it's a wonderful program, we've shown a great partnership together, and what's better than teaching second graders how to swim and prevent drownings in our county? Thank you.
Mr. Beckett, now is it true that during the, during that time, we've got, we've got our students from our high schools maybe even that are
Correct.
participating, they're coming and they're, you know, it's a, kind of a hard base.
Yeah, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
Student leaders from, from your school and that are on our swim, on your swim team, that also swim in the pavilion. They're coming to help so we can split the groups out if we, gosh, if we can get them into nine or ten groups, I'm not sure what we'd be able to teach eighty-four kids at the same time, but.
Yeah, and Mr. Beckett, when he brought this to us, I was like, are we, like, will people, will we be able to do it? And I've been really pleased with the fact that it's, it's grown, and I mean, I know somebody who I worked very closely with that was telling me about how awesome the experience had been for, for her child. So, it's, it's, it's something that I'm very thankful that you brought it forward as a partnership that you wanted to enter into. And I'm, I'm, I would love maybe this time next year to bring you back and see, see if we, if what we've been able to do with it there.
Yeah, be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's great.
I have a question. Do some of the parents come to watch their child?
They do, parents, grandparents, and usually the last session, the teachers will get in with them and have fun, go down the slide. So, yeah, try to have, have fun with it too. So, not only are they learning, but they're having fun.
Having fun, that's great.
Billy, it was, it was a year or two ago, do you remember me mentioning to you that in the community, there's been an accident on the creek, something had happened that was in the news, and I mentioned to Billy, we don't think about it often because the creek is kind of hidden, it seems in our lives, but we're a very water-centric place in central Kentucky, the creek, the river, the lakes, all of that. And I said to him, I wonder, are we doing anything in our school system? Any sort of a unit at a particular time in development for the kids that's, that's a water safety kind of thing? How to manage a boat, how to help somebody if they are drowning, how to get yourself out of a water situation? So, it thrills me to think that you all are.
Yeah, you are now.
You've got our back on it, yeah, that's great.
Great, we're here to help.
I'd love it if the classroom could do a little, it would be neat if the grade, second grade did a unit on water safety that could even correlate with that, you know, to, to bring it all full circle, that's great.
Well, again, this is another example of we encourage our people to take risks and to do something new, and if it isn't perfect, well, you gotta start somewhere, you know? And so, again, we started last year with one school, and now here we are, more than half, so.
I love it.
Anyway, thank you, thank you, Miss Beckett.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, agenda items six, it's our consent agenda, items A through I, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, gonna get monotonous, sorry, sorry for the audience, there's so few of us here. All right, construction report, Tony.
You brought half of the Nelson.
That's right, oh, that's right, good one, good one. Good evening, everyone, and I think most of you remember Andrew Nelson, he's architect in our firm as well, and he's been very critical help in putting together the colors, as you all have met him during the one-ons that we were doing. I'm gonna go over the construction first at Oxford, and then we're gonna go into kind of the results of the color, and I'll talk, and then I'll pull these boards up in just a minute, and maybe at that point, we'll put the lights back on. But, so last week, flew a drone, so there's been some more progress than what you're seeing right here, but it's always good to get some drone coverage of, of the school.
Ooh, a lot of progress.
Yeah, so you can.
Is that geothermal?
Yes, they are, that's right, that's right. Very perceptive. So, you can see they've got roof on the left, and actually, they have deck on the right where the, the storm shelter, all the way to the right there, and they have some decking on that there. So, they're gonna be able to kind of drive some areas in so they can work throughout the winter. And this is just closer to the front entry area, the library right behind it, the cafeteria behind it, and of course, the gym walls have been up for some time now. Again, and you'll see some pictures from today that are even, has that a little bit further along. Just another shot there showing them working on the roof of the classroom wing. Shop going back around, that's, that'd be the kit, all those little white pipes in the back there is where, where the kitchen is, and then the cafeteria right there in the middle, gym in the background. And here you can see today, and actually, the pad, the slab is poured there, but that's the entry piece. You can see they've got the block up, and they'll start putting the joist on there soon. That's the cat, now the cafeteria slab is poured, and they've got the beams out there. And this is the storm shelter area I was talking about, you can see it's all decked on there now, and that will get concrete on top of it soon, and so it's gonna be a very, very strong storm shelter. And that's kind of, for the construction, I wanted to focus a little bit more on the color tonight, but with the construction report, of course, they've had some bad rain, but they've continued to work and continued to have to progress. I was surprised how much progress they had this week with all the rain that we've had over the, the past couple of weeks. But before I get into the colors, any questions just on, on the construction of the project?
Still right on track?
Still right on track with what, and of course, the, we haven't had the progress meeting yet this month. I guess that would be, yeah, so that'd be next Tuesday, usually it comes right before the meeting. But what they've been telling us at every meeting so far, that they're, they plan on meeting that schedule, as long as we don't move into a, an awful winter, you know, and so we'll just, you know, hope that that doesn't happen. But so far, they, you know, with the mild rain, I say mild rain, we've had some hard rains, but with the weather we've had so far, they've been able to continue working. And the more they can dry in, the more they can work inside even when it gets colder, so. Well, I'd say on track so far. Okay, well, we'll move into the colors, and of course, like I said, Andrew and Jeff and some other people in our office have been instrumental in, in putting these together. As you know, with, we've met with administrators and board members one-on-one, and Mr. Parker and Ms. Holmes, and Greg. This is kind of a general consensus of all those meetings, and, you know, there's been a lot of changes up to this point. So, what we're showing you tonight is pretty much the result of where it's going. But now, if somebody sees something tonight they don't like, let us know, you know, so that we can, we can make a change if needed. And with that said, I'm, I'm gonna put the, so what you see in the rendering sometimes, as we explained in our meetings, the colors aren't as good as actually seeing these colors. And of course, Renee was telling me that, you know, these boards have been in the lobby, that a lot of people have come in and given a lot of positive compact, comments on the color palette, so that's good to hear. But like I said, Andrew's been a little instrumental in all of this, and so I'm gonna let him kind of walk you through this while I put these boards up. Do you mind if I, will it be too much light if I turn the lights back on?
That's fine, that's fine, I got it. I was just now, I was just now realizing and appreciating the fact that, that Oxford House
Won the World Cup. I know what I was saying too. It's coming, it's coming to North America next year.
I think, I think those are all stalker.
They're ready.
Yeah, I think, I think they are, yeah.
That's a good, good.
I like the owl, neat cue over there on the.
So, through the, through the different provisions of colors, again, like Tony said, we kind of aggregated on this option. We do have a second option flooring in this area to show later in the presentation that gets rid of some of those diagonal, oh, thank you, sir. We do have a second flooring option to show later, later in this presentation that gets rid of some of those diagonal lines and just kind of goes back to rectangles for the flooring area. But we've got kind of an emphasis on school colors, a few grays involved. And that orange brick, that's also gonna be at the exterior, so that'll be like the, the wainscot up to a few feet off the ground in this area. Here's the media center. Again, those, those kind of pixelated sofas that you see in the first slide, those carry through into the media center, so we'll, we'll have the school colors, a few other colors in there, and some, some brown flooring. That big bright orange sofa.
Carpet right there, because like I said, some of the colors on there, but I think everybody liked.
Whichever one didn't have the green, that's all I remember.
It's a big black square now.
And again, you know, you all, we, we made sure we had no more than two people in the meeting as we were kind of walking through and sharing options. It was, you know, did you all line up exactly? No, but there was a lot of commonality between both. So, that's kind of, again, doesn't matter what group you came in to see this, generally, probably lines up. I think there's one or two little tiny that are kind of. Everybody did like the orange circulation over the present.
Light fixtures look like it's gonna be. I know.
Well, there's only a couple.
Look at him, did you see him back there?
They're LEDs too, so they should last quite a while.
Yeah, I got your back, Greg.
Moving on, this is the, the front general office, we got that, that bright blue kind of color that some people liked for the bulkhead and the sofas, and then just kind of a warmer flooring pattern, which, again, we have an alternate flooring pattern that kind of extends into this area that we'll, we'll show later in the presentation.
That was essentially, that one image was essentially, as I recall, both groups really liked the top of one image and the bottom of the other, so this is.
Exactly. So, we've got a few different classroom colors we'll be presenting. Some of these same color schemes will be used in some of the smaller office spaces. Color A, we're showing a blue floor, and then the, the bright orange, kind of Oxford orange wall. Option B, we've got the gray floor and then a bright blue wall. And for option C, we're showing a gray floor and then a bright yellow wall that could go with some of the yellow that you see in the terrazzo there on the, the sample board.
And you say option, actually, what we're doing is there'll be three different colors, similar to Creekside where one classroom will be the orange, one classroom will be the blue.
So, we're using all the options, so it'll just be different classrooms throughout the building.
Right.
Showcase those different.
Well, and we've been referring to them as options all this time, technically now, I guess they're fixed. Yes, so there will be three different colors as you go down the class, as you go down the corridor. One will be yellow.
Yeah, nice.
And we can, we can code that too, so we've got some kind of colorways in the terrazzo flooring we're showing, like one corridor has a bunch of blue accents, for instance. So, if we want to do the blue corridor with blue walls, or the blue corridor with orange walls, we could get into that too, and just kind of simplify the, the spaces a little bit, which I'll show you in a little bit in this presentation here. So, going back to the colorways, this is corridor three fifteen B. This has got blue accents in the floor, a blue sofa on the ceiling, and then just some orange accents kind of splashed in there. Likewise, for the opposite corridors, these will be the two main wings of the, the classroom part of the building. We've got orange accents, an orange sofa, and some blue paint accents splashed in there.
So, back to the yellow classroom, why are we, why is the yellow classroom, I don't remember?
Well, we had just.
Because we don't have a yellow floor.
No, it was a little bit of yellow floor, and I think the discussion, the discussion was, well, if we have yellow on the floor, we're using it anywhere else in the building.
Right, so the decision was, okay, so the decision was to keep it in both.
And now it's a little bit more in the, when we get the floor.
Okay, because I hadn't seen that decision, okay.
Yeah, when you get to the totality of it, then it's.
Yeah, like the lobby.
But there's that blue porch ceiling.
I like it, that blue is nice.
Yeah, so this is the, the rear lobby, near the cafeteria and the gym. Got that kind of light blue classic porch ceiling, the sofa accents, and that extends into the cafeteria. So, if you look through the, the glass wall there in the cafeteria, you can see the acoustic ceiling coming down, and above that, there's a gypsum board ceiling that will be light blue. Here's a rendering of the gymnasium, so kind of went all out with color for the gym. Lots of that Oxford navy color along with orange accents. We're showing orange ductwork, orange retractable bleacher seating, and that kind of bright blue stage curtain.
Blue.
Oh, I'm sorry, blue retractable bleacher seating. So, here's the option that we're showing currently in our renderings for, for flooring. So, you can see that the corridors are color-coded, you've got a blue corridor, a gray corridor, a yellow corridor, and an orange corridor. And then, of course, in the front and back lobby, you've got some more color splashes kind of interacting with one another. So, just to kind of zoom in on that area there, you're seeing some pinwheel type shapes in the flooring.
When somebody comes in the front office, they can say, and there it is, it's blown up here before, go to the lobby and follow the blue.
Right, I love that, yeah.
Follow the gray, follow the yellow.
That's huge, I've served in a school that was that way, it just saves so much confusion for kids and for visitors. Great idea.
Yes, yep. So, again, that's the, the front lobby, as we're, we're showing it rendered, it has the pinwheel type pattern. And here's an alternate option for the flooring pattern in that area, so that would get rid of all the diagonal lines, just use rectangles, kind of varying sized rectangles, and keep those same accent colors.
Is there a shot that shows the whole school now with the floor plan and the colors?
Do we have that in our presentation?
Now, are you talking about this particular, well, nothing else changes?
I know, I just want to see it all together. See what I'm saying, see how it matches up with the rest of the floor versus the triangles matching up with the rest? Golly, Tony, just forget it, gosh.
So, this is the, this is option, one or the other, the diagonals or the squares?
Back, I guess, back up, right there.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to see.
I see, well, right, well, they're just more orthogonal.
Well, sure, I mean, I mean, I can see it, I just wanted to be able to let everybody see the, the whole.
Be awfully squarey if we had.
Well, go back to the foyer, the 3D view of the foyer. Okay, for the, the two of you, I don't know, did you all share my concern, these ladies? Okay, when I left our meeting, I was, you and I were together, you and I were not, and Wendy, you were not with me either. I left, and didn't say it in the meeting, obviously, but left reflecting, and one of the first things I fed back to Renee and Billy was, we've got a barn quilt thing going on, I'm talking to everybody back here too, that I, I did, with the owls and the barn quilts, and I see it. And this looks like Roblox, like a video game, futuristic. It's pixelated and it's country barn quilt, and I don't like that.
So, cozy and modern.
Modern, and I, I just don't like that, it's a theme, it throws me off visually. So, I asked, are we carrying one or the other everywhere, or are we doing, what are we doing? And Renee said, well, I hadn't thought about it, but now I can, I'm seeing it.
I see what you're saying.
And so then I created something that I didn't mean to create, but it did, for me, when I'm looking at it, I'm thinking, well, that's cool on the floor, that's like a barn quilt, and I've got a barn owl, and we're going for something here. And then when I look up at the pixelation, and then the way we've done the back hall with the pixelated, it's two different vibes, and so I was worried about the look once it was. So, I expressed the concern, and Renee was like, let me think, and then she said, I can't quit thinking because now I cannot see it.
Susan.
So, that, I think is what, when we, when we got to the thought about.
Does Wendy have a comment?
I can't tell who's talking.
Is it Wendy?
I don't know, somebody.
I was, I, it's Wendy, but I'm, how can I talk?
Go ahead, Wendy.
We can hear you.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm. So, I don't feel like, I, I feel like I'm hearing myself twice, y'all hear me twice?
We only hear you once.
Oh, okay, well, then good. So, the, are you talking about like in the hallway up at the top where there's rectangles, but at the bottom it's different on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, because I'm like, that, that threw me off because I don't remember seeing it like that. And then at the top, when I look in the hallway where it says Media Center, and then you go into the Media Center, the, I feel like what's missing is yellow because yellow is in everything else, but there's no yellow.
I agree, Wendy, it was one of the reasons why I turned and asked the question. I agree, Wendy, it was one of the reasons why I turned and asked the question again about the classroom. Because I think I'm only seeing yellow in the classroom and in eight triangles.
Right, yeah, I would like, if we're going to do yellow, I would like to see yellow inside the library where the gray in the double light blue or whatever it is. To carry that yellow all the way through.
So like you're saying, you don't see it in the library.
Right, there's no yellow in the circulation area.
Because all the pixelations, wherever we have pixelation, we don't have a yellow mixed in it, but that would be really busy, it is.
But yeah, my thought was the yellow was kind of a.
If, if the yellow went away, I wouldn't care, I was just going along with yellow to be going along. But I'm still back to the theme problem, what is the, the flooring options he's showing us. But I agree about the yellow too, Wendy, if the group feels that way.
Yeah, I think the yellow just originated to kind of get a fourth color and get some of the accent. Tried to carry it a little bit forward, we did have some discussions about adding.
Starts getting real busy. Yeah, I don't know, if you went back to the library, if I'm on that topic, oh, you don't have to go back necessarily, but. I mean, I don't know, do you, is that well yellow? What do you do? How do you find yellow in libraries?
Well, I mean. One, right, for yellow. That's the main area. I think it would get a, we could, we can get rid of the yellow altogether.
The wood has some yellow used in it too. I think we could definitely find like a, a yellow rubber tile, if you see the blue kind of in the back of the room there. There's a rubber tile floor that kind of sweeps around through the back end of that room. And I, I think we could definitely find a yellow there, um, if you'd be interested in seeing an option like that.
So just maybe to add a little more yellow and some of the more.
Where it's, where it's not too busy, but just accent, you know, not everywhere. I do like the yellow.
I think, I, I do think too, Tony, maybe it'd be helpful if we could see the, like this shot and the other shot with the other proposed. Yes, I'm sorry, we couldn't get the rendering together in time because you look at. Flooring, well, just like the barn quilt. It is, the colors are very bright, they're representative of something that is not going to show up.
Right, and that's what concerns me is that, if, if this is our yellow.
Yes, there it is right there.
Right, and that is far from that yellow paint.
Yeah, it's soft.
It is most assuredly not the same color as that yellow paint. Right, so it's not going to give a strong yellow vibe, which is why I was questioning the only place in the entire school that's going to be yellow, really, that's orangish. That's a bright yellow wall that's just going to pop up on a half dozen classroom walls.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can just.
Kill it, I understand, sure, sure, sure.
We can just not have.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm just talking through so that they could, for the rest of the board to kind of hear.
Well, that's why we brought this up.
Yeah. Or library fabric, yeah.
That's the fabric right there.
That's going to change the whole room too, won't it?
No, what's that?
The library? No, no, with that material on the chairs.
Well, yeah, that was always the plan.
I know, but I mean, it's going to change.
What are your thoughts on the floor?
I really don't like that one, it's so geometric to me. We're talking about an elementary school and, and like you said, the, the owl and, and colorful and that, that just looks. Maybe I'm not a math person, but it just looks like geometry to me or, or, you know.
It's very orthogonal to get away from the diagonal.
Well, it's very contemporary to me instead of cozy. And the others cozier like the barn quilt.
Yeah, I like the other better too.
But the rest of the school isn't like that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's true.
That's, that's, that was my concern, I don't care, but it seems like it ought to be one or the other.
Well, what, what could go up there if we went more with the pattern on that floor there? How could that be changed to make it fit more appropriately?
Well, uh, because those lines are kind of already, uh, did, I don't, I don't.
Not much, probably.
Not, not much. We could change the color.
Right.
What you see is the grid pattern that.
Okay.
Do another. You know, I think a lot of times in the lobby, the lobby is. Sometimes. Not a whole comeback, right?
There it is.
You know, right there.
I guess my point is it's geometric everywhere else, the back corridor around the cafeteria.
Well, I mean, the other pattern is, is those too, they're just not all rectangle.
Where's, where?
In the lobby, it's still geometric forms, but it's not all rectangle. Like the.
Yeah, they're all triangles.
They're all triangles. They're all diagonal, like triangles and that kind of thing, and the other, instead of just all that squared off stuff.
We exceeded the limit of interest for me. The shape of those floor tiles is not going to make a kid smarter or safer, so it's whatever anybody wants. I'm not going, I don't care about it beyond the ninety second fifty percent. You all have, I'm serious, whatever you all think is fine, I don't think it's worth debating to that extent.
Yeah, well, we've had some discussion about it, so we can, you know, talk more.
Well, of course, I mean, we're at the point now where.
We gotta do it.
We need, we need to have the contract or something. If it's just down to the flooring and the terrazzo flooring, we could still do, like right here, if we did something more, you know, Frank, barn quilt. In, right here in front of the restroom, that kind of common space. You know, maybe that would be a way to kind of leave some of that back and forth.
The flooring doesn't look that boxy and, and contemporary and different to me, it was the above ceiling thing, but I could live with that. But I don't, that's, I think that's fine.
I don't know that anybody's saying anything about changing color.
No.
Okay.
I like the.
I think, I think Tony was thinking that if she liked the barn quilt, he was trying to make everything else barn quilt. And I guess what I was saying is the whole building is modern except for the barn quilt and the foyer and that concerned me.
Couldn't barn quilt other places, doesn't change.
Doesn't change the modernity of the rest of the design of the building.
I think what, I think it's fair to say kind of what maybe where is fine with the yellow on the floor as it being that yellow. But maybe the yellow in the classroom might not make a difference, that kind of. Either yes or no. I don't know.
Good idea.
I mean, the thing about the yellow of the classroom, if, if it wears on somebody's soul, it's easy to paint one wall in the classroom. Right, that's what Greg said.
Well, and doesn't, doesn't make the fourth color to have each hallway color coded.
Well, and that's one thing that we ran into when we started talking about color coding was that, you know, in fact, we, you know, gray is not a great primary color, but it's like, what are we, are we going to introduce another color here? So yellow gave us the path to have another.
Yeah.
Another color that you could point at, say, go down the yellow corridor.
Yeah, I think that's important, I like that, let's keep that.
Would, would we like to see potentially, um, if, if this is not, you know, if this is anti-thematical to the rest of the building, this is too abrupt and orthogonal. Would you like to see maybe another lobby office?
I don't know, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with that, but I, but a rendering might help all of us to see it, I don't, I don't know, but I don't like it.
Let's do a rendering of this and then maybe.
And then maybe, maybe then do another.
Down here?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the only question that I had was at the top in front of the media center out in the hallway and then within the media center, could that just be a solid gray?
Where, where?
Right there.
Slide ten and eleven. Just solid gray, you know where it says Oxford Owls where that's gray, just continue the gray all the way through. And then when you go inside the circulation area instead of those rectangle boxes, make it just gray? Or one color, I don't know.
Uh, well, my only thought there is that it would be.
I thought you might have been doing something right to her.
She was asking a question and I was doing that question.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, sorry, 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 I thought you were doing something right to her.
That it would just be very kind of plain, just to do, you know, if we have all the dentals. Yeah, if we, if we did all the dentals and just painted them a, 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 a single color, um, it kind of gets rid of some of the dynamic, I think, of, of, of having the sofas with the grid in it to begin with.
I, I think we could certainly, um, if it was popular, you know, amongst everyone, we could certainly do that or we could reduce the colors to just grays to give it more of like a cloudy kind of sky look rather than having the orange and the dark blue kind of jump out at you. I do think having a little bit of dynamic color, since we have all those reveals, would probably be the best option for that area.
And that's how Crete side, it could, it could create a different color. But of course, the lobby is all the circles and, and we were asked, hey. I mean, I think some people like it, but they just wanted something different.
So what question?
Well, just basically, as long as the, that we're sticking with the dentals, it would be this foyer, do we want to go with this foyer or the other four word foyer? Or would you like us to maybe even go ahead? I think if we're okay with all the other color, we could show you a rendering of what the new proposed lobby looks like. But then maybe do something a little less abrupt, if, if the right word, geometric, mathematical in the front lobby. And show you a rendering of that as well, and that could be just something maybe that you passed around in emails and got some.
Let me ask this question, am I the only one? You have, do you like the foyer? Do you like the foyer?
Very much.
Don't change a thing, it's just like that. Wendy, are you okay with the foyer like?
Yes, 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 I'm fine with it.
Yeah, of course, on the outside, um, this is the final, most of these colors have already been selected, but we did put the white merramic there between the downsides, so I think that's really pop. And outside of that, I think it's been a solid question, hope everybody's happy with the color. And it's always hard, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of materials, a lot of colors and try to put patterns there.
Lot of decisions to make for sure.
A lot of decisions to make, but this, uh, this will help us to move forward and tell the contractors to go and order materials and get to their. Yeah, sure, sure, thank you all for your.
Thank you.
Involvement, yeah.
Item four.
So move.
Oh, sorry, that's. All of the papers?
Just a second, I'm not giving that trouble.
Okay, so number eight, that's Eleanor, I believe, I jumped in, um, where I shouldn't, and I seconded. Aye.
Item nine, first change.
Order zero, zero, one, according to Oxford Elementary.
Okay, I'll move to.
They'll move to proof.
Thank you.
Would like to second that motion, no discussion. Charles, can you?
All those papers?
Aye.
Item ten, the first five, right across the actual question.
So move, second.
All those papers?
Aye.
Item eleven.
Here we go.
I'm gonna let you have this, because I don't know what I've done and you might want to make sure she can hear you before you get started, because I don't want her to be. Anymore off on an island than I feel like. Kind of got it. You got her, can she hear you? All right. Wendy, you're now on the table with Stephanie and Wendy.
We're super excited to be here, uh, this evening to share with you our KSA assessment results that, um, went public on Wednesday. Um, so these are the assessment results from, um, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we will begin. I've never used the mouse before, I'll let you, you can be in control, Wendy. All right. So if you, um, look on the first page, um, it is the overall results for our elementary. There we go, there we go, look at that, okay. All right, um, all kinds of tech issues today, all right. Um, so you can see where we are with our district elementary. Um, as you all know, I always like to look at the status score, that is the score up in, um, in bold at the top, just because that is like the true performance without any change scores. Um, but that shows that we are medium across the board in reading and math, science, social studies and writing, EL and the quality control. The next level is the change score, so we want to see green because that means growth. Um, and you can see that we had growth in reading and math, which as you all know, we have been, um, really significantly looking at reading and math over the last several years. Um, at our elementary level with our HQIRs. Um, you can see that we are maintaining in science, social studies and writing, um, which you all know that we are piloting an HQIR in science and social studies this year. So we look forward to seeing, um, the impact that that has. Um, we are currently at, um, medium and then with our decline, we did have a decline in elementary with our EL students. And we'll talk about that here in just a few minutes, um, but that did have an, a negative impact on the overall scores. And then our survey data, which is our, um, climate and quality survey that our students take while they, the day that they are taking the assessment, and we saw an increase in that. Um, but overall, that is a medium or yellow, um, for elementary.
What does weight there mean?
So the way is that, um, the reading and math assessment, um, the, those scores take up fifty-one percent of the total score, so that has the highest weight. Um, L, science, social studies and writing takes up forty-five percent of the overall score, EL takes five percent and the survey data is four percent. So you can see that the survey all totaling one hundred, um, but the survey, um, does have the least amount of impact on the total score.
And while not exactly to those numbers, that's kind of the reason we kind of gave reading and math the larger block. So, you know, just to kind of put it with your mind, yeah, help your mind see it.
Yes, yep. Um, so if you turn the page, you will see our district middle school and excited to have Ms. Kelly Beckett, oh, she already left, dang on, brag on her. Um, but, um, our middle schools, um, we're very pleased, um, to see the results, um, for our middle school scores again. Um, I like to look at the status score and to see that we are green or high achieving without change is super exciting to me. Um, and I know it is to Wendy too, but, um, you know, because that just tells us that we're high achieving without change, um, which is exciting. Uh, you can see, um, the reading and math, uh, scores, we increased significantly from the year before by seven point one, which makes us a very high achieving district in reading and math, which is very exciting. Um, and in science, social studies and writing, again, we had an increase of two point nine, which makes us high achieving in middle school for science, social studies and writing. Again, our EL, um, we took a decline there and we're going to talk about that in more detail here in a minute as to, um, you know, what we're doing to, to impact that this year. And again, we had an increase in our survey data, um, to also be high. So overall, in middle school, we are, um, at green status or high achieving. And then if you want to turn the next page and we are looking at high school, so as you can see, our secondary schools, um, are really, you know, doing some great things. So if you look, um, again, looking at the status score in bold, um, we are high achieving again in reading and math, science, social studies and writing, post-secondary, EL, and that's without change. So that makes us very happy, but then if you look at the change score, you can see that we increased significantly in reading and math at the high school level, which gives us an overall score in the very high achieving in reading and math. You can see in science, social studies and writing, we also increase, which makes us high achieving there. Grad rate, of course, we are medium level, um, and working on systems now for that, but we still increased, which puts us high achieving after change in grad rate. Post-secondary readiness, we had increases as well, which puts us at high achieving. In the high school level, we are high achieving in EL, and we are high achieving in the survey data from our students. So, and overall, at the high school level, high achieving. So, very exciting. So we'll go into more detail here in just a second.
So overall, elementary school, we are, we had a medium rating. Middle school, we received the high rating, and then the high school, the green high rating. Um, looking at our schools separately, we have two orange low schools, two yellow medium schools, nine high green schools, and one blue very high school.
Um, and if you're interested, we did put the, um, overall cut scores, because as we look into the next page, you can kind of see, um, how close some of our schools were to achieving that cut score. Um, alright, and I have the key, um, uh, on the, um, top, so you can see. But here is a breakdown of each of our schools, and of course, you know, we like to look at longitudinal data. Um, so we have three years' worth of data. On the left is the twenty-two, twenty-three schools, uh, scores, um, for each school. Then you look, you look in the middle, and that's the twenty-three, twenty-four, and then we look on the right in those twenty-four, twenty-five, and we actually put the, um, indicator score there, so you could see the growth, um, of a lot of our schools. So, yeah, I know, right? I know, it's, it's amazing, absolutely amazing. Um, and you know, I, I will say, that's, here in Scott County, that's what we always, um, uh, when we're working with our principals, that's the expectation, is just that we grow. Um, and, you know, even if you're orange and we are growing, that's, that's, that means we're moving in the right direction. And so that's really what we emphasize, and I think it's really exciting to see this. Um, so we'll just jump into celebrating some schools. Uh, let's just start with Ann Mason Elementary. I mean, right, I mean, their growth this year, and I provided a breakdown of these numbers within your packet, so later you can kind of see, but the growth at that school has been significant. Um, and, and, um, just, you know, under Megan Carroll's leadership, um, you know, this was her first year's principal at Ann Mason, and, um, I think it just really goes to show you the power of a great leader. So, yeah. Um, looking at Creekside, you know, they are growing, not quite to the rate, but you know, as I told Carrie, you're growing, and, and that's the direction that, that we want to, to continue moving towards. Um, Eastern Elementary has just been very consistent over time, continuing year after year after year, being a high achieving school. And, you know, those, when you're looking at just one or two points, that just tells you that that's good quality teaching, because it doesn't matter who the students are, they're getting the same outcomes. So, um, then you look at Garth. I know, I mean, that is incredibly exciting, um, you know. In twenty-two, twenty-three, that was when Damon was here with us at central office as, um, as our director of HR, and then he goes back, and last year, oh, he was so disappointed with those scores. We were excited, because look at that growth. Um, but, uh, it was a great phone call to have when we got these scores to, to let Damon know that, uh, that they, uh, that they had grown so much that now they're green. Just another great, um, example of great leadership. Um, Lemons Mill, so that is one of our focus schools, um, for, which they have been our, a focus of ours. Um, and really looking in, um, if you look at the breakdown that I gave you later in the packet, we're not going to look at that tonight. But, you know, when you look at their science, social studies and writing scores, and whenever I break those down, um, you know, they had, they used to have one teacher that only taught social studies, and when that teacher left to go to another school district, then that, that, then these other teachers were the ones sitting there saying, oh my goodness, now we're going to teach it. And they were the first to come to us mid-year, because they, they knew the assessment data that they were doing was showing that they needed to, to really focus in on some work. And so they were the first to tell us, like, we want to try a HQR in social studies. And so we have provided that for them. So they actually started it last year towards, I think, probably, what, February? Um, and so I'm excited to see what happens with that now that they'll have a full year of having an HQR, because I will say, the social study scores in that district, if you look at the reading and math, the school grew, um, which is great, because that's been our focus, but, um, that science, social studies and writing, writing really did have an impact, especially social studies. So we're working very intentionally with that school, um, right now, um, to, um, and, you know, going in there, working with them, providing them a coach that's coming in once a month, um, uh, to help support that HQR work. So, um, and, um, the next school of focus is Northern Elementary. Um, so that is, um, a school that we are looking at. I mean, they are yellow, but when you look at their data, it's, um, continuing to go the wrong direction. So, um, Laura Helsby has, you know, really, uh, she, of course, we get these raw scores in August, and so immediately she revamped, she got with Damon and Hope at Garth. She's revamped her PLC process to where they're really looking at data, um, and so, and, and of course, our team now is going and doing learning walks and helping support her in that work. Paul goes to the PLCs with her, so, um, I really do see, think that she has the vision to, to, to next year have that going in the right direction.
And I think that's something that maybe the general public doesn't really fully understand, is the fact that even though we weren't able to communicate between our schools, what was going on, all of our schools had a pretty good level of awareness around what they were, what was coming.
Yeah, and, and I will say-
Not had a number, but they had an idea.
Well, and we had a number, and Wendy and, and myself, when we get the raw data, and now we've included Harper into this, we have a data party, and we are able to get it pretty close, uh, of, of a idea of, um, of where the schools are going to be. But we always tell them, like, this is Stephanie and Wendy math. So, you know, but we, we're getting, I'm gonna brag on us, we're getting pretty good at it. Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so next we will look at Southern Elementary. Um, you know, honestly, we all know the, uh, turnover that we've experienced at that school last year, and not just turnover before the school started, but we experienced turnover during the school year in multiple grades. The fact that they maintained actually was very, was actually very, I was happy about that, and that's what we told, um, Laura Keegan. Um, you know, she has stabilized that staff, and that was her goal last year. Whenever I said, what does success in May look like? She said, teacher retention, and she's achieved that. So, um, and now they, they do a great systematic PLC process, and just the culture of that school this year is really great.
You all know, you can, you feel it when you're in, in a school, and you can feel it when you're there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, so, and, you know, it's like, I told Peter the other day, I mean, I forecast next year at this time, we'll be having a very different conversation about Southern Elementary. Um, so, stamping ground, now this is one of those, that's a exact, perfect example of how when you score so high with the current system with change, it hurts you. Um, so, but they're still high achieving, and when you look at their status score, they're high achieving, so we just tell them, Megan, we'll hike, keep doing great things at, at stamping ground. So, um, Western, great celebration. They just kept trending up, and they finally hit that green, so very excited for, um, them. Um, Georgetown Middle School, oh my goodness.
You've all seen the, the videos.
Yeah. Yes, they are, we have celebrations occurring over the next several days. I know Scott County High School is going to go watch Wicked. Um, the juniors and seniors get to go next week, the juniors one day, the seniors the next, because they were the people who were a part of that. Um, so super excited, but if you haven't seen Georgetown Middle School's video, I know, I think Scott County Schools shared it yesterday. Oh, it was so well done. It's also, um, inviting people to their community showcase on December ninth. Um, and so it's just a great video. So if you haven't seen it, check it out. Royal Spring, again, continually, um, you know, staying at that high level. Again, that shows great teaching, you know, no matter the year, uh, no matter the kids, they continue to stay at that high achieving rate. Look at Scott County Middle School. Oh my goodness. And so I wish Kelly was still here. I mean, the, the thing about it is, is they were, last year, they were, they had increased significantly, they were very high achieving, and when you look at their status score later on, when you have time, they're very high achieving even on status. And then you look at their change, and they still significantly increased across the board. I mean, Kelly Beckett and her teachers are just doing amazing things. They are fifteenth, yes. In the state of middle schools, yes, you took my note right off my paper, Eleanor. Yeah. She wanted top ten, and so whenever I had to email, and I said, I know it's not ten, or ten, top ten, I said, but, oh my goodness, you're fifteenth. And they were twenty-sixth last year. So, that's huge.
And, you know, you were, when you were going through and talking about middle schools in general, and you talked about our middle school reading and, reading and math score, how that status score was exceptionally high, that's thirty-first across the entire state.
Yeah.
Out of a hundred and seventy-one.
Yep.
That's pretty strong.
That's really great. Yep, yeah, really excited. Um, Great Crossing, Joy Lesby was so happy that she rebounded back to green. Last year, the change score dipped her down, so, um, but, super excited. The school was lit green, uh, if you drove by, still is. Um, so it, it looks great, and she's got some great celebrations, um, that she's got in, in play for her kids. And then Scott County High School. I mean, I am just so excited. They increased, um, and you can look later, they increased in reading and math, and I have to say, for both high schools, their ELA, their English Language Arts departments are both rocking it out. Um, and I gotta give a lot of credit, Scott County High School's math department, we spent a lot of time. Deborah Reed, I think she's been at more, uh, Scott County High School math PLCs, um, and, but I told, I told Elizabeth I was going to have to get something green for the math department, because, I mean, we have been working with them for three years, and to see the growth they had this year is just huge, just exciting work, and they deserve it. Um, post-secondary readiness was great at that school, so just across the board, very excited. Alright, um, so now the not-so-fun stuff, I'll hand it over to Wendy. I'm the lucky one.
That's terrible. That's terrible, Stephanie. What's going on in your growth plan?
That wasn't strategically planned at all, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't like that. No, I don't like that.
Stephanie, I like, Stephanie, I like the color of your jacket.
Of course, this is next year.
Yeah, buddy. Sounds great.
That's right. Okay, so when we are looking at TSI, or that targeted school improvement, when we look at twenty-one, twenty-two, we had eight schools that were classified as TSI. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had six, and in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had four. And by Stephanie and Wendy math, we thought we were going to have two schools that exited out. However, there was a change in-
Did you say two?
Three.
Three, sorry, three, sorry, sorry, three. Um, but there was a change in the calculations, in the way that they configure that. And so because of that, um, we still have four schools who are now a TSI. However, if you'll notice, Ann Mason is green, Georgetown Middle School is green, Scott County High School is green. Um, but we're just talking about one population of kids. And then Creekside Elementary and Western Elementary have been added into TSI status, which we track that data. We look at banked data over three years, so we know if we're not going to improve that third year, there's a chance they could be TSI. So we anticipated those two moving in. Um, but we continue to have our learning walks in these buildings and strategically plan for, um, how we can support the admin and the teachers and the students within those places.
And let me help Wendy, so that this isn't just dumpy dump, Miss Stephanie dropping it on her. So with the three that were supposed to come out, um, the way that the rules had been, the way the game was played, it was looking at year over year, and so that was what we were doing. It wasn't until literally the day that the scores came out, that they said, oh, by the way, the rules have changed. So that's one area where I do feel sorry for our schools, because, I mean, we put a lot of work into those schools. We had voluntary, voluntary two-day reviews, where KDE brought in a swarm of their people to see what was going on. It was all, it was a good thing, and it was an opportunity for them to see that we're willing to grow, and we want to do positive things. Um, but, you know, the unfortunate things, again, things change. So the reality is, if we're looking at the three-year average, if the schools that already hit that mark just stay where they're at, it's gonna, it's gonna work itself out. But it did, we didn't love that, that, you know, the rules of the game changed midstream, but it is what it is. Um, so, see, even then, it's not as bad as, as it looked.
Well, I really wasn't meaning to dump, like, we had planned this, and that was not intentional. But anyways, I will say, um, to speak to the EL, um, you know, we weren't surprised with Western. Um, Western has one of our largest EL populations at the elementary level. Um, and so we also had a teacher that was on maternity leave, um, last year, and, you know, we provided a sub, but an EL teacher is a very unique skill, and a sub just doesn't necessarily have that same skill. But that teacher's back from maternity leave, and, um, so we have some, we also, um, have provided a training. Wendy set up a training for, um, all of our EL teachers that is specific to how you use thinking maps in working with EL students. Um, it was a four-day, three-day training, um, that we were committed for them, to, for them to be a part of, and, um, that was a great, I only got to go for a little bit, so, but anyways, and then also, um, Wendy is going to be working with, um, Nicole McCoy as well, um, to really go in and do some intentionality in their classrooms, and look for how we're supporting those teachers, um, and our EL students, um, every day, both there and at the middle school level. Um, so we foresee, and EL is a unique, last year we were very high in elementary with EL, and very high in middle with EL. So it's going to ebb and flow the way that testing goes, so. But we feel confident in, in that work.
Sure, so, meaning the, the number of students we have. Right, so it varies drastically. Overall, we have around six hundred. At Creekside and Western, we have around eighty-ish. Lemons Mill, yes, yes, at each school. Western is like sixty-five, but then you have Ann Mason, I think they have thirteen. Stamping Ground has one, so very, very different. Great Crossings High School has a hundred and four. Scott County High School, I think, is now up mid-seventies, so very different. But we keep an eye on the numbers, and we're always looking at our allocations to see how we can place teachers. Yeah. That is true. Yes. We do. I'm glad you asked. So, at the high school, at the high school level, specifically, we have the newcomer academy. So we have students who are, um, from Scott County High School, and they get bused to Great Crossings High School, and they receive their content where our newcomer teacher is located. And so all day long, she supports them in her classroom, but then also pushes in as well. And so with her and the other EL teacher at Great Crossings, they really have a great culture for our EL students there. Absolutely, and then the second year, they go back to their home high school, yes. Yes. And that is a challenge at the elementary level, where we're spreading our teachers, and they're traveling between, and so, um, there are definitely more newcomers at Creekside and Lemons Mill, and so we try to have more staff in those buildings than others.
And Wendy has been, you know, last year, everybody, everybody comes to me, want more staff, right? I mean, that's, that's what, yeah, they're advocating, yeah, advocating for their area, advocating for their department, all the things, their school. Um, but she was able to very creatively find ways to address the needs without, um, us having to increase staff. Can't say that'll always be the case, but she was able to do that the past year. Um, really appreciate that.
She's going to let me do the celebrations. Look at that. Okay, so-
Did you change the script? See, that was, see, see, that's- tally it down.
Here we go.
It's adding, it's just adding.
So overall, middle school and high school are achieving at that high-level green, which we're very pleased with. We're increasing in reading and math at the elementary level. We've increased significantly in- We've increased significantly in reading and math at the middle and high school levels. Increase in science, social studies, and writing at the middle school and high school levels. Increase in ELL at the high school level. At the high school level, there was increases in graduation rate, post-secondary readiness, EL, and the student survey results. We went from having two low-performing, eight medium-performing, and two high-performing, and two, and two very high-performing, two too-low-performing, two medium-performing, eight high-performing. Nine, nine high-performing, and one very high-performing school. You wanna do the district priorities?
I will do the district priorities that we currently have. So you saw that we have these six TSI, ATSI schools that will continue to be a focus. Um, but we also are adding, we have one school, um, that is, has been continually declining over the past four years. Um, so we are also going to provide extra support for that principal and, um, and, um, some coaching and things of that nature, um, uh, to, to assist that. Um, so that is our four, our four A2SI, A2, TSI, two TSI, and then the one, um, school that is, is going, that is declining. Um, our overall areas for growth continue to be science, social studies, and writing, because we are at that maintained level at the elementary school. We, we are, um, so we are doing those pilots currently for HQIRs in that area, uh, to provide those teachers with some additional, um, support. Though we also have cohorts that we meet during collab days that are supporting those teachers who are teaching that. So, um, we are addressing that next, it's the next layer for us to look at. Um, the quality of school climate and survey is maintained at all three levels when you look at that status score, so that's something that we want to look at. Um, you know, because of course we want our students to feel safe and to have a strong, uh, climate and culture in their schools. Um, and then of course, um, EL has declined at the elementary and middle school level. And then we're also having a lot of deep conversations around graduation rate currently. I met with Ms., um, Brown and Ms. Lee today about thinking about our alternative programming and our PhD graduation rate. Um, met with the high school guidance counselors on how we are tracking, because it really is how you're tracking that cohort, and starting really to have a deep dive into how we are looking at that systematically. Um, so, so those are our areas of growth, but overall, we are incredibly proud of our students, our teachers, our principals, you know, our team that supports that work. Um, the growth over the last three years has been substantial, and we can continue to see that, so I'll let Mr. Parker add in.
Thank you, thank you.
Wendy, it might, it might be easier to do it through the phone, honestly, if she just, instead of- Human readers or computer readers for those students that are EL that get a reader?
So on the KSA test, it is, most of the time, it's the computer reader unless it's specific to a human reader in their PSP plan.
Did you get that?
Yeah, and as, as a teacher, I know, I, I, I don't know what, why that has changed, because it used to be a human reader. And where I am, my school has seventy percent planning, and that is an issue that needs to be addressed. If that's gonna be the case, um, I'm suggesting, uh, support with the students and teachers, because I think that is an issue as well, that a child has to use a computer reader, especially in elementary, middle, high school maybe. But in the elementary child, having to use a computer reader, that may be some of the reasons why Lemons Mill or, or, or other schools have an issue, and they went down. So I would like to talk more about that, uh, with you, Ms. Wendy, and, uh, you know, Steph, about that.
Absolutely, yeah. One, one thing, though, to just remember is, when we're talking on this piece about, um, EL and the decline, that's actually talking about the access test. That's the language proficiency test piece. So, um, how they do on the, on the KSA part of that, that is the TSI. But the way we look at it with the overall accountability, that's the actual access test.
Um, I always, well, go ahead, anybody- I always, you know, I struggle, I struggle with, I, I struggle with how, I struggle with my emotions during this time of year, because, um, you know, I know our kids are more than just a score, and I know there's more to this for our staff than just a state test once a year. Um, but at the same time, too, this is a measure that everybody looks at. Legislators look at it, the community looks at it. Uh, I went to, uh, to, uh, you know, uh, get vehicle registration today, and the lady that was at the window was like, oh, hey, yeah, what do you think about those scores? You know, parents are talking about it, um, you know, and, and, and there's, there's pride with what they've seen that we've been able to do this year. Um, so again, it's, it's not the only thing, but it is a thing, and it does matter. So, um, I don't know, sometimes I feel like some of my people are not sure how to read me on how I feel on any of this, and, um, it's positive, it's great. Um, I just, I don't wanna, I don't want, I don't want anybody to feel like that's all I care about, I guess.
And, and I will say, to add to that, because this isn't the only piece of data that we look, look at for the success. Our I-ready scores are also growing. Our MRA, our MRA data, which is the survey that our students, our staff, and our families take around Leader and Me, um, it is also growing, and so I think that's a really important point to make, Mr. Parker, because we really do want to look at how we're triangulating that data, so that we're not just looking at one thing.
And, again, we've got preschool, we've got Phoenix, we've got Scola, we've got SCAP, we've got ECS, that all are a part of this, but kind of, you know, hard, hard to tease all that out, but anyway, um, again, just, uh, like you said, I'm, I'm, I'm really happy and proud for all of our schools and all of our, all of our district folks that have really pushed in and, and helped, and, uh, again, just keep on, keep it on, we're gonna keep on growing.
You may not think it's important, but someone told you it is, that's where we are. This is our evidence that we are.
You know, to that point, probably the best example of that is our Scott County High School math department. You know, it like, it, we're not doing the same thing in every single one of our schools, we're giving everybody a, you know, everybody's getting a little bit different, but it shows. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, very much. Well, do we, I will discuss, uh, I'd like to make a motion that, do we- Okay, I approve the recommendation of the, uh, s- school calendar committee.
So it's not a motion, it's just a recommendation?
Yes, we need a motion to approve the recommendation.
Yeah, she made the motion.
Well, now we need to discuss whether we want A or B?
No, your, your motion is for the one that's recommended.
Gotcha, and that's what I want.
So, and to be clear, so I know there, there was some discussion from the past meeting, and then I've gotten some calls, just asking some questions for some information. I think the concern that many of us have is the potential that what has been recommended, Oxford won't be ready for that. If that happens, well then, we'll, we'll make a change. So, um, and of course, we'll make the change as soon as we have to, but I think there's many layers, and Brent, I'm looking at you, there's many layers to this calendar that would not, that we would be able to maintain, with the exception of just pushing back the, yes, 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 is that?
Well, if we did have to change it, it won't be the first time.
That's great.
Nineteen ninety-six, we, yeah, we, yeah. No discussion, yep.
Item thirteen, uh, this, this first reading of revised policies for seven point one. Item fourteen, approve one additional platform to Scott County Schools' price of full education.
I, so move, second.
Item sixteen, create community partnership between Scott County Public Library and Scott County Board of Education.
Move to approve, second.
If, if I may, I believe we've got Macy Hall back there, yep, from the library, she came, she came, just, just wanted to let her know, since she's here, you know, thank you for bringing this to the table.
Yes.
We, we certainly, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to work with our local public library.
I think, yeah, it's great. I know, Miss, and if we're discussing, I might just, um, give kudos to Macy and to our new executive director, Elizabeth Waslawski. I feel that they have a real vision and, um, heart for helping all of the students in Scott County, because they are our clients, but they are also their clients, and so working together, we're, we're really gonna make a difference. And I appreciate their outlook, um, and concern for our students and bringing their stuff.
I'm gonna call a timeout real quick, because I think we might have skipped the Singletary Center agenda item. That, 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 that thing, you know what, now I'm gonna say, I believe Diana. Remember when she would always say, it just flipped around, and I didn't see it, well, we'll-
Sorry, Wendy, thank you for catching.
Can we go ahead and vote on this one and then go back?
Yeah, let's, let's drop back to fifteen and then come back to this one, since that'll keep us in order, yep.
Item fifteen, approve a grievance point in case Singletary Center and Scott County Board of Education.
Move to approve, second. Aye.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Must we have to do it again? You're doing great.
Who was, who was the first, who was the first, who was the second? From before?
Okay, well, this is, this is, um-
The Singletary?
No, the library.
This is, I did, I made a move.
Okay, made a motion, and you made it, and you seconded that, okay. And we've already discussed.
Yes.
We love you, Macy, we love you, we love you.
We love it. Move to approve, second.
I, so move, second. I like the idea of them including family members in offering their courses, I think that is a great idea.
Move to approve, second.
I, so move, a second.
I, I will just, I do just want to say, because this took a lot of effort, um, more than we kind of expected to get it to the finish line. Thank you to Liz, uh, Yandel, and to Brent Allen for their work getting us here. Oh, it's Bridget here, I didn't know Bridget was here. Sorry, Bridget, I, yes, so yes, there we go. And Brid, Bridget helped get it there, too.
Yeah, Bridget did it.
She's, she's not mine, but we can, we kind of adopt her. So there we go, yep.
Move to approve, second.
I, so move, second.
Move to approve, a second.
This is, uh, just an example of the-
Good thing.
Yeah, it is, it's just-
A win-win.
Yep, yep, we're able to get these buses, uh, and, you know, very, I mean, we'll have it here, have them here in a month. And, uh, and again, we just, we did have that one bus that got totaled with that wreck on four sixty, so, uh, comes at a perfect time.
I, so move, a second.
I, I, I do want to point one thing out, I don't know if yours says it, it might say four, but it's five, actually. There's an eighty-four passenger, there's a, there's three seventy-two passengers, and there's one seventy-five passenger. Yeah, yeah, I, I'd, I'd added one late to Corinda and put her in a bad spot, so I apologize for that. Yeah, yeah, just for the, I just wanted to express that, yep.
Move to approve, second.
The, uh, summary of cash activity for October twenty twenty-five. Our beginning balance was sixty-one point six million, we had receipts of seven point six million, expenses of a little over fourteen million. Our ending balance was fifty-six million, um, ninety-nine thousand, two seventy-seven, eighty-nine. Of that, uh, seven million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-two cents was in investments, uh, for construction, leaving our ending cash balance at forty-eight million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Move to approve, second.
All right, um, super intense reports, um, this, I, I think, I talked to maybe all of you about it, just saying, this has been, man, a lot, a whole, yes, we've been, we've been really busy between test scores, Oxford Elementary, um, progress on the site, um, just, just a whole lot going on. Um, also working through redistricting, um, the proposal that we will be sharing with the community, um, that will be coming up. We're gonna communicate out when all that will go down, um, tomorrow. Um, and, uh, I, I appreciate all the help from our team. I mentioned later Georgetown, um, Scott County Planning Commission, who sat through the presentation to kind of make sure, I won't, you know, they've been great with providing us information, I wanted to make sure that they, I wasn't mincing words, saying something in some way that, you know, they would find issue with or anything like that, and, um, and then also, too, the timeline, because there's a lot that goes into this in terms of who we share with what, when, and, um, so that, that's been, that's been pretty time-consuming. Site visits have kicked, uh, have, have started up, we've got a few of those under our belt, and we've got several more to come in the, in the coming month. We did have our DLT this month, uh, just two days ago, at Forte Academy. Um, we went to Forte Academy, I can't even remember why, but we went for something or another that they had, and Joy, um, Lesby, and, uh, Principal Joy Lesby and Principal Gabe Hart went, um, with us. And actually, did John know there, too? Yeah. Um, was Heather there? I don't remember if Heather was there. Okay, okay, all right. Um, well, so anyway, we were there, and what I, you know, Joy mentioned, she's like, holy cow, I haven't been here since it first opened, and it had changed so much. And it had changed so much. And then we started thinking about the fact that, you know, we think about what we're trying to do as far as growing our learners at the elementary level and at the middle school level, but it would be helpful for our principals to perhaps see some of the opportunities that exist for our kids once they leave their doors and, and get to the high school level. And, you know, we weren't the first to have the Four T Academy. And that is something that I always say is an embarrassment to me, that I feel like we should have been, given that Toyota's here, largest plant North America for them. But we are by, we are for sure the flagship. We are for sure the flagship. The, the complement of, of all the resources that are available there. It is, it is the best one in North America now. And it will continue to grow. The resources that they're putting into it, the human resources that they're putting into it, it is first class. And what I love about it is, is it is an example, it's a model example of what you can do when you pull in public and private together. You know, it doesn't have to be just the Four T Academy. And, and again, we've got, we've got other things in the hopper, but I, I don't, I didn't really talk to any principals after, after it was over. But I did, as we were going through some of the tours, and there were some things, some really eye-opening things that came from that. I thought it was good. So, we, we did open the door to perhaps expanding and, you know, not just always meeting at ECS for DLT, even though it's a good space to do it. And it was a little, it was a little tight where we were, but it was, it was cozy. I'll call it cozy. But maybe we, we will expand that and go and see what else we've got around, around the school districts so all of our principals understand and can, can see that interconnectedness. Southern Elementary Fifth Grade Showcase went and, and got to see growth there from what they had, what they had provided last year. And they're, they're, they're open to feedback and continuing to grow. CKEC, they have purchased the Harrisburg campus, went to the ribbon cutting there. KEDC last night had their sixtieth year celebration. Rocky Atkins was the keynote. It was a great event, great event. GMS coin presentation. So, a month ago, at this board meeting, we presented to students from GMS. But they also had, I think they had a play going on and they had some other things, and some kids just weren't able to make it. So, I went there for all the kids that didn't get it. And, and the coolest thing about it was it was at the suggestion of one of their little leaders. They had reached out to me and said, "Hey, had you thought about?" And I was like, "Why wouldn't we?" So, anyway, that, that was, that was pretty neat. Mayor Jenkins, he's, every year, he visits all of our schools. And we got four more of those schools kind of under our belt this past month. KEDC, I went to a school law training there. Not a whole lot of, we're really nothing new, but there were a couple little nuggets that I picked up, just always trying to keep us on the right side of it. And then I talked about Oxford Elementary. We had some progress with some utility work that we've been working through. And then, as you all know, the colors meeting. And then GMS, so we've got driving possibilities, the, the grant program with Toyota. They provided some vans to our schools. You know, we, we, we've had the Explorer. When I got here in sixteen, we had the Explorer, and it's just loosely referred to as the Explorer, and that's kind of all we had. Well, then we went from the Explorer to a fleet of what, nine, I think, ten? I think nine vans total, or nine, whatever, smaller passenger vehicles. So, we were really careful. We didn't want to just go willy-nilly and just put them all at the schools. GMS, they have their after-school tutoring program. They have a bus and they transport by bus, but they talked about if they could get the van on site, they could use the van every day because there's one route that's a little bit far out, that if they could peel that off the bus, it would get everybody home a lot quicker. So, they, they provided us, me and Josh Drew, with a plan on where they're going to place the bus, how you check in and check out the bus, the conversations that they're going to have with staff, so everybody understands. Because with the buses, or with the vans being here, it's very simple. It has to be inspected monthly. They're right here. Maintenance can, or the bus garage, they can go down there and check it at any time. So, we, there are a lot of little details to work out. So, we're piloting with Georgetown Middle about keeping vans at school sites. It'll help us learn in case there's things we've overlooked. But I mean, we've gone back and forth with the plan for over a month between the three of us and shooting holes in it and pulling other people in. So, I would expect that other schools will come a call in wanting the same thing. And assuming that this goes the way I think it'll go, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to do that.
So, these are vans to take students home after the after-school tutoring program?
Well, so, the, in the case of the driving possibility, so Driving Possibilities provided some vans.
Right.
And then you all approved, I think, three other vans, maybe Chryslers, four other Chrysler vans. And the thought behind that was the Driving Possibilities vans are only allowed to be used for the schools that are a part of the program, and they're only to be used for very specific reasons. So, we had this struggle where we got all of our other schools that aren't a part of Driving Possibilities that may have that need, too. So, and it would really, I'll be honest, it was Wiley Messer. He and I were talking at, it was at KSBA when they were presenting. And he was talking about some of the things, the opportunities that they had missed out on because at the time, we'd only had the Explorer, and a bus was too expensive. So, having, having more transportation available has opened the door to a lot of our, our student service organizations that, that are, that are, current tech ed students are a part of, for them to be a part of that. So...
So, you're saying they're just parked there at Georgetown Middle, but all other schools can use them?
No, no. So, currently, currently, all of them are parked over at the bus, or over at the bus compound. But GM... Yeah, so if they need them, they come, they get it. But that's a little bit clunky, particularly if Georgetown Middle's planning on using them every afternoon.
Right.
So, that was the whole thing with, okay, well, let's talk through, how does this look if, if the van stays on site? Where will we park it to deter theft? All the different things. So, so we walked through that. And I believe Josh told me, I think next week, GMS is picking it up to take to GMS on a, on a permanent basis. So, yeah.
Who will be the driver? Will it be more...
Well, so there's, with that, there is a very specific checklist of things and that someone has to do to complete that. We will still have Josh and P.T. Kemper will be the keepers of that. So, that was the other reason it made sense that they stayed here because then we had a stronger control on that. And again, my biggest concern with parsing them out is that the, the level of seriousness that I know, I mean, safety is at the forefront for our transportation department. And that was true before I got here. But that's the part that I can see, you know, you all can see it, too. People in schools may be, "Oh, just let me, let me just take the van." Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so again, we just wanted to, we're starting with GMS. That way, we can make sure that it, the plan is as solid as we think it is. But, but again, with GMS, you know, with the Driving Possibilities vans, as long as it's one of the schools that are part of the Driving Possibilities, they can use those. But again, not every school can. And, and again, would, would we still be able to use GMS's van? Let's say one of our Driving Possibility schools wanted to use all five of them. That'd be fine. They would just need to work that out with the school.
Okay, that's it.
Yep, yep. Talked about meeting with the Great Cross, or the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission about Oxford. Did have a meeting with city officials and county officials about an industrial revenue bond. And that is with a, a local business, not, it's something that's happened in the past. I really honestly kind of thought that we would, this was one of the many things we did in the past month. I thought this would be something that we would be voting on at this meeting, but it, it's just not quite there on the, on the city, on the city side, I believe. And then prep for KASS's presentation at the interim joint committee at the Capitol, and I attended in the background when, when they presented. And last thing I'll say is a reminder about the GMS community showcase, December ninth. Is it six to seven thirty? Yes, six to seven thirty. I, I have, I have reached out to all the principals that are a part of that feeder pattern. Okay, all the elementary principals, Joy Lesby, pulled them together after DLT. And I would say, I would, I would encourage you all as well. And I said, "Hey, I'd really like it if you could personally identify three people that you would call that are movers and shakers in town and say, 'Hey, please, please come to this.'" Because it's, I mean, there's just a lot of really, really good stuff going on over there. The people in the walls know it. Me and Stephanie and her team, people that are there often know it. But we want everybody else to know it, too. And that's, that's all I got. Sorry, it was a lot.
All right, more comments?
I really don't have anything this time. Thank you.
Wendy?
Wendy? Let's do this one on the computer. How about that? All right, go right in.
All right. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to zoom again. Last week, last month, I wasn't there, but I went to the Leader in Me event that, that Scott County put on. That was amazing. I just wanted to say that. And then going to Lemon's Meal and seeing the children, oh my goodness. Just amazing how they were leaders. Well, right now, I am in Atlanta, and I am at the Ron Clark Schools, the academy, where the actual house system started. And to see what their students are doing, what I saw in Scott County, I'm just, just so excited about the things that are going on, and so excited about Georgetown Middle and Garth, you know, really pumping up those scores. So, congratulations all around to everybody. Thank you all.
Turn your mic on real quick. Sorry. There you go. You're, you're good.
Yes, but turn it on now.
While Wendy was, while Wendy was, there you go. Yep, sorry. I apologize.
Excuse me. The test scores, I actually, as a teacher, went through this also years ago with your superintendent's scores and your media scores. And it, it means a lot. And I know that you cannot judge solely, as we were saying, on test scores because you can't. But we have to have something that the public and the teachers can look at and say, "I have really done a good job." So, I've been through this, and I know the importance of it. And we will support those scores going up, up, up. So, anyway, thank you. Do I keep it on, or do I turn it off?
You're good, you're good, you're good, you're good.
All right. I'm proud of the scores, too. I'm thankful for all the work, and it's just so exciting. Coming through COVID and out the other side, I just can't thank Stephanie and your team. I just can't thank you enough. I shouldn't think about all this as much as I do. All right. Are we ready to move to closed session? Pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight one zero one F to discuss student discipline matters.
I so move.
All those in favor?
No discussion, so we don't have to...
No discussion on that attempt.
Oh, we will have discussion.
Oh, yeah, after the fact. Thank you all.
Hey, Wendy? Wendy, can you hear me? Wendy, can you hear me?